Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 23 planning board meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second? All second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in. Yeah, so the three of you are going to abstain? And in favor?
Three abstentions?
Yeah. Yep. Okay. Number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflicts with the votes that we are going to take tonight? Okay, hearing none. Item number three, GR Waterville Operating LLC is requesting final plan review.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all?
Doing well, thank you.
See if I can balance both of these things here together. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. My name is Jim Waterman. I'm with GR Development, also doing business as Washville Car Wash. We're the largest express operator of car washes in the state of Maine. Fantastic.
Oh.
Of course I have the.
Chad's full service.
Okay, great. I'll start over. So we're Washville Car Wash. We're the largest operator of express washes currently in the state of Maine. We operate five. We have three others in the development phase with Waterville being one of those. So a little bit about us, we started a little over five years ago. We started in Long Island, New York. We've moved to New England in the last two and a half years. We acquired Fast Steady's Car Wash in Augusta and then Brunswick. And from there, we've grown in Bangor Brewer. We're currently under construction in the city of Portland. And we also operate in Topsum. A little bit about us. We try to be really great stewards in every community that we're in. So every community that we operate in, our managers are part of Chamber of Commerce. So we look to get involved with other entrepreneurs and other chamber members to better ourselves in the city and make a good footprint, give our employees some options that a lot of chambers offer. And then we're also a large charitable organization. In the state of New York and Long Island, we're the largest sponsor for the Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And we are one of the top sponsors for the WISH program here in Maine, which we took that graciously over from Fast Steady's and have continued to give back to that program. We also support a ton of youth sports teams and also adult recreational sports teams as well. One of the things that we really pride ourselves on is to be an express car wash, which means when you come and visit us, we don't want you to hang out too long. We like you to come in, get your vehicle cleaned. We offer a free vacuum service. That's easy and convenient to vacuum and take care of the inside needs of your vehicle. And then we make it, you know, in a way that you could exit the property. We really focus very heavy on our site design. It's what makes us successful in comparison to other operators. We want you to be able to pull onto our property very easy access and then egress very easily off with safety to our employees, safety for our customers on the site, as well as a good traffic flow for the neighborhood that we're developing in. I'm going to get into the project now. Do you guys have any questions about Washville itself before I get into? Okay, great. So I wasn't able to make our preliminary meeting that we had a few months ago. But we took some great notes and worked with Randy at Carpenter Associates to make some adjustments based on the feedback that we received from y'all. What we ended up doing was we ended up reversing our traffic flow to create more stacking around the building because I know that that was a concern that was brought up. So we created kind of a horseshoe to get around the building to stack not only in our three main pay lanes, which will always be attended, but we will, they also have a horseshoe that brings us around to a single file lane that gives us the opportunity to put more cars on the property. The other thing that we were able to still incorporate, which was really beneficial, was that kind of escape lane, we call it, so that you have a good traffic flow in case you had an emergency to get off, out of the line and egress the property safely. I know that one of the concerns that was brought up before had to do with traffic pulling out onto the Plaza Drive and where people would be accessing the property from. So one of the things that we are proposing in our design as well here is to really try, because it's actually beneficial to us, to really get our customers to access down the road a little bit further at the intersection and cut up through the plaza that way. So we're going to concentrate our signage, our entrance signage and our monument signage down there to let people know that that's really the area in which we would prefer you to come in to the lot. We obviously can't prevent KMD's access that's already existing. But I think that through, you know, some pavement markings and some onsite signage as well as offsite signage on the Martin property, I think we can accomplish at least a good mitigation of traffic coming off of KMD directly. Is there any questions on traffic flow? Because I know that was the main focus, so.
Any questions on the board? Cassie? Okay.
Can you just demonstrate like how a typical car would enter the property, use the service and?
On the little?
Yeah.
With the mouse or do you have a mouse?
Sure, I apologize.
Okay.
The pointer.
Yeah, so if you were.
No letters to turn, but so KMD would be here and up here is Washington Street. So there, that's a signaled intersection. So they would progress here, come down about here and then enter onto the Martin's property, past the Taco Bell, through here, enter here, make their way around, get in the stack, wait for the go-ahead and then make their way through the tunnel. Go through the tunnel in about two or three minutes. Exit. They have the option to exit straight away and out or stop for the vacuum. So that's the typical path. You'll see since the last meeting that this whole island now is closed. So there's no way to shortcut in here. It's actually easier to come this way now.
When you say you can't restrict people's entrance from KMD, that's where you're talking about, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, they mean.
And that's the.
The only place that you would be coming in, okay.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think that this makes a lot of sense. I think it'll be easier for you all, too.
Yeah, and I think one of the concerns that I wanted to bring up as well, as far as traffic goes, is, you know, obviously there's another operation in town that's within vicinity, close vicinity. And I think one of the advantages that may be noted here would be that there should be some dilution of the issue that exists there today, just on the fact that there'll be an equal offering in the market. And we felt that that was a good enough reason for us to be in Waterville because we have a need. We were often asked in Augusta, please build one in Waterville. It's on our Facebook page. We get a lot of requests. And we felt like this was a good opportunity that there was enough market share for both operations to do well. And this would help maybe mitigate some of the traffic concern that exists there today.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any, to bring any new utilities onto the site? Like water, sewer, electric or anything like that?
We do. Do you want to talk about those connections?
I can talk about that. You'll allow me to talk right here. So we talked with already.
Will you just put that, Anne, can you turn on that mic maybe and?
Sure. Hello?
Do you see that one button?
It looks like it's on already.
Yeah, it's on.
Do you want me to pull it over?
Yeah. Will it work? Okay.
I'll try to yell.
I'm not a yeller, but. So we'll talk about the utilities a little bit. So we talked to Kennebec Water. We are proposing to bore across KMD because there's a moratorium on that road. We'll be over here with a tapping sleeping valve. They had questions about the pressure and the volume, but we're going to use a two-inch line so we can bore that easily. We'll use tanks and pumps within the facility to get what we need for flows within the car wash. So that's, that's the tough one, across the road. Gas is on this side of the road, somewhere here in the walkway. Only about that far away. Power is on this side of the road, too. We're going to jump overhead to a transformer pad. And then all the power from there will be underground. Sewer will naturally make its way out to a filter bank. A fancy filter, recycle the water, eventually make its way to a sewer manhole and then to an existing sewer manhole here. We were asked not to cut into this sewer line here because this is a service for this lot over here someday. Trash is proposed to be here in a fenced-in enclosure. There's two vacuum stations here and here. Those will be enclosed as well. And there's obviously a few sight lights to safely light the path. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We're pretty lucky to have all but the water on our side. So it's a good location.
It said you were boring under the street.
You turn on your.
Said you were boring under the street to get the water, is that right?
We are only because we have to. I think there's a moratorium on the road, so.
Okay.
If there was some way to open trench, we certainly would choose that way, but for cost.
Yep.
But there, over here, I think this is an erbing here. There's a large grassed area that we're aiming for to do the receiving pit for the line and do the tack. So there should be plenty of space there without disturbing any pavement, really.
Great.
When we had a meeting, you gave us a number of how many cars in this structure that you're going to be stacking those loads. Did you want to share that with them?
Yeah, we've increased from our previous meeting, we've increased our stacking almost forty percent more than what we originally had proposed with the horseshoe design. So it's a substantial increase in the amount of stacking that we can create on the site.
That's great. Great.
And this actually is the same layout that we have at two of our other locations, one in Concord, New Hampshire, and one in Methuen, Massachusetts. So we're familiar with the design and it worked well for us in this layout.
So it's tested.
It is, yeah.
All right, great.
Yep.
When do you propose starting construction?
We're probably looking to do construction in early Q2 of '25.
Question, Anne, should we? Question for you, I guess. Do you think that you can get the construction done within two years?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're typically about a seven to nine month turnaround from shovel on the ground to completion.
Just because our ordinance has a limit, so we would add a condition.
Yeah, understood.
Come back.
Yep.
Ordinance requires that you start within a year and finish within two. You know you're going to finish within two, but you could always ask for an extension beyond one year to start, if you want to make.
Yep, we should be good.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or anything else from you all?
I feel like we're excited to be part of the community and here in Waterville. We're looking forward to washing a lot of cars and cleaning up your streets a little. Pun intended, of course.
Do you have a copy of the findings and facts?
We do.
Okay. So I will just read the number and kind of the beginning of the finding and facts, and you just say true or false. So the development will not, number one, sorry. The development will not result in undue water or air pollution on or off site.
True.
Number two, sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the development?
True.
I hope so. Commodity for you.
Yeah.
Number three, will not cause unreasonable soil erosion?
True.
Number four, the development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion?
That's true.
Number five, the development will provide for adequate solid waste disposal?
True.
Number six, the development will not cause unreasonable burden on the municipality dispose of sewage?
True.
Number seven, the development will not have undue adverse effects on scenic or natural beauty of the area?
True.
Number eight, development is in conformance with zoning?
True.
Number nine, the developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the above stated standards?
True.
And then the conditions are just from the water department and sewage department?
Yep, all the fees outlined are all in compliance. Yep, very good for us.
And nothing else? No questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion to accept the findings and facts as presented?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Second?
Oh, sorry, second. Thank you, Dave. All those in favor? All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And thank you guys for taking our suggestions in the last meeting. I know we kind of like bombarded you, but.
No, it's good. We appreciate it.
Well, I apologize. It was my first time here in a long time.
It's okay.
I didn't expect to take on the tough parts. We're just presenting.
Yeah, I know. I think you made some great changes, so thank you.
You did bring plans to?
Yeah, we can sign those. Get that one.
D E P R E.
All right. Last item on the agenda is the city council is requesting the planning board recommendations regarding, concerning revisions to the zoning ordinances to allow apartments in commercial zones. And do you think that you could catch everybody up, because Tom and I were the only ones here in the last meeting, on what we sent to the council already?
Oh, so what the board voted to send last time?
Microphone. What the board voted to send last time was allowing apartments in the commercial C zone, but only the part of the commercial C zone along Water Street, on the west side of Water Street, across from the halfway down. I'm not sure how far down that goes, but I can pull out the map if you like. And it doesn't go as far as King Street. I'm pretty sure it becomes, stops at King Street.
King Street to Sherwin, basically? Oh, no, sorry. It stopped, it's like just past Sherwin Street to Spring Street is the commercial C zone.
And then it becomes commercial B south of that, down to King Street.
And we do not allow apartments in commercial B?
We do not at this time.
Okay.
So the only zone, the only commercial zones now that allow apartments are commercial A and commercial C1, which is along College Avenue, a part of College Avenue.
Great.
So you recommended, what was it, what did you say you did last week?
So the only thing that was added the last meeting was basically these properties in commercial C along Water Street to allow housing.
So there are housing in that area?
Yes, there is. So that will make the existing housing conforming with the zoning. But there is a vacant lot there, and I think there would be the possibility, did it, a possibility to add more apartments if people had the ability to do that. So. Okay, so the housing that's there, for the most part, is fairly old. And this, this particular zoning ordinance wasn't created until 1971. So when the 1971 zoning ordinance was adopted, that made everything that was already there legal non-conforming, meaning that it's already there, so it can stay. But if you wanted to add more apartments, you can't do it.
Okay.
So if somebody.
Or if it changes use to like, say, you had an apartment house there and you change it to a store or a shop.
It can't go back.
Unless you come here and ask.
For it.
So this is to prevent us from having to approve every single time somebody wants an exception, right?
It's also going to encourage, I think, development, right? I mean, if, if there's an existing commercial B or commercial D, they would have to come and ask for a rezoning, right? Which I don't, I don't think that they even would. I think they just say, wow, we can't build there. I kind of have a good, better, best that I actually want to suggest. My, my first, I guess, proposal is just to say, let's allow apartments in commercial B, C, and D. And that's it. I mean, any development would have to come to the planning board anyway, correct, Anne? For apartments.
Apartments, yeah, right. If it's three units or more.
Okay.
Has to be approved by the planning board.
So I guess then we could say B, C, and D are allowed to have apartments of three units or more. And then it has to come to us. And then if we think it's a safety concern or if there are environmental hazards or whatever, we say no. But.
Well, I think the idea for this specific area is that there's a lot of space in like upstairs, maybe in like situation where there might not be three or more units. Do you know what I'm saying? So, but maybe in C and D, you could do three or more?
Could, could we, could we say that all apartments, I mean, we could say that, right? We could say, allow it in B, C, and D with planning board approval?
Well, all apartments do have to receive planning board approval in the residential zone, so I'd have to check the ordinance to make sure.
My, and my big reason isn't for making it so that people don't have to come to us. It's more encouraging this development to actually happen. So.
Right. So in the residential zones, under permitted uses, it says multifamily housing. And then the multifamily housing regulations require that they go to the planning board. So, so you're not saying that. So, so you're not saying that you would want a single unit or two units to go to the planning board for review? You're only wanting multifamily housing?
I think if it were in commercial C, we might, just in case someone's trying to put an apartment on top of a gas station or something. Or behind one, or that might not be the best idea. I don't know.
Extra protections, is that the idea?
Yeah, basically. Because I, I think that there's a lot of property out there that's zoned B, C, and D that would be a good use for housing, and I don't think...
Is it smarter to rezone those areas, though, than it is to just open up commercial to residential opportunities, or?
Yeah, so in order to rezone it, we would have to notice every single person in the zone.
Right.
And that's very expensive.
Okay.
So we did that with like the C1, and that's sort of where that came from. But the idea was to, there's been a practice of like, someone wants to build an apartment in commercial C, so they come to the planning board, they ask for a re, well, they have, go to the council, ask for a rezone, it gets sent to us, we take a vote like three weeks later, then they send it back to them, they have to take two votes.
Right.
And then we end up with like one parcel that has like a contract zone in the middle of a bigger zone. And so I think we're trying to just sort of come up with some...
Streamline the process.
Yeah.
Recently, somebody on, on College Ave, right, had an apartment already like that I believe predated the zoning, but they wanted to add a second one. And because it wasn't built during the pre-existing condition, they had to come here. And it does delay the process, like they could have had more housing available more quickly if it, I think that's the idea, right, to cut back on some of that?
Absolutely.
Wait time.
Yeah, I, I would just still like to have some sort of safeguard to make sure that we're not putting people at risk.
Can we put, can we say that you can build, like you can have apartments in the commercial zones in existing structures only, like for adaptive reuse purposes?
That was actually one of my thoughts, was for adaptive reuse. So... I would also be okay with that.
I think that gets away from like the issue of someone building like an apartment behind a gas station or...
Right.
So are you saying, are you committed to this idea, or are you just throwing it out? The, what you're suggesting right now is allowing apartments only in buildings that exist as of September 2024? And so you don't want, there's a vacant lot on that strip on Water Street that we, that you already voted to recommend the council rezone. So how would that work? You wouldn't want, it used to be an apartment building and it burned down.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I was kind of, I, I mean, maybe if it's an existing structure and they're only putting two apartments in, they don't need to come to us for approval.
Is this the only area that we're really focusing on?
No, this would be for the whole city.
Yeah, all of commercial B, C, and D.
So like, if you look at, if you look at the like College Ave, for example, this is kind of where it came from, because once we added the commercial, the C, C1 zone, which is the kind of orangish reddish zone there on College Ave.
Yeah.
So it's just on one side of the street, and we did that because we had to notice all of those people, so it was like easier to deal with it in a chunk, basically. And, but then on the other side is like commercial C, and so, and then there's like that residential bit. So what has, what has been happening is you'll see like some of those zones that are like, or those parcels that are like red striped. Those are like the contract zones, right, Ann, that we have done, because people have come to us and had like an existing apartment and wanted to add another one. And there's like already housing on that side of the street, and so we've rezoned it.
Yep.
And so this was just, so it kind of came from this situation over here where we had tried to find a way to create more housing in an area that had been prohibited before. And then we were like, okay, so we've had some success with this little part, how can we add this in other spots of the city?
Okay.
And encourage like some mixed-use development rather than like businesses here, house here.
Yeah.
So that's sort of like the background. I don't know, Councilor Finch, do you have any thoughts on this?
I hope not. Thanks for inviting me up here. So in reality, you did summarize that pretty well. And also, one of the goals is also to be proactive, especially with housing, housing development. And there are a lot of areas in the city in commercial B, C, and D where you could put housing, but it's kind of prohibitive for someone to even want to put housing in there right now. I don't necessarily think that above a gas station is an unsafe place to live, but I would say you can, like we did with the downtown zone, is you can carve out exceptions. You could say, except this type of, you know, facility, this type of building, this type of whatever, and so you could carve out the exceptions. But if multifamily units already have to come to you, that pretty much covers multifamily units already have to come to you. And if you're concerned about single or duplexes, just list out the areas or business types you think are unsafe and just exclude them from being permitted to have housing at all. That would be, that would be my suggestion.
Could I just clarify? The multifamily housing in the residential zones is required to go to the planning board for review because it's specified in those zones. So you would have to add that.
Oh, we'd have to add the language.
You'd have to add that specification, yeah.
You know, we can do that.
You can do that.
But is it worth, is it worth adding all of that to, if they're already coming to you anyway, then what, what are we alleviating here by changing any of this?
You're alleviating, one, you're encouraging housing development.
But how? Because we're not taking, I guess, we were doing that by making it so they didn't have to come to us, but if they still have to come to us anyway, we haven't really saved them a step.
Well...
Yeah, so they don't, they wouldn't have to come to us with a rezone.
Yes.
So what would, what happens is then they have to come to us like two to three times. So they have to come and rezone, and then go back to the council and wait for those two meetings, and then they have to come and do a site plan review. So like they, the people that were just here did final site plan review, they have to do a preliminary, and then come back again with a final site plan review and go through all of that. So it's like eliminating four meetings.
And it would include rezoning, and, I mean, a great example, in my mind, would be down by Hamlin's Marine. I believe that's commercial B, and the gas station that's right next to it, which is actually a great example of a gas station that might be a good place to have an apartment. I don't know. But there's, there's the potential, there's land there. So today, if somebody wanted to do that, they would have to come and say, we want to get it rezoned first. And yeah, it's going to take three months to get everything approved.
That's like building a new building, correct?
Right.
Right, in your, in your scenario?
Yep.
Or in all, or in all the scenarios. Like, in my mind, I can't get past the, like, the, how many times we've heard people come here and be like, all right, there's already an apartment, I want to make it into two apartments. And, and the fact that it takes all that time and money just to add something in a place that is clearly like perfectly fine for living. So how do we, like, should we differentiate between those situations and the more complicated, like, you know, three or more, you know? Three or more is that automatically already like determined by pre-existing language? It's not, right? That's only in residential.
Right. But again, you can add that.
Yeah, so, so if we want this, a similar, if we want similar language where if it's three or more units, it still needs to come back here, which would make sense because it's a bigger build, right? What do you guys think?
I'm 100% good with...
And I think the reason David said gas station is, I believe, we both watched the last, I'm sure, I believe I remember April or somebody talking about not wanting people to live next to the airport, right? That's obviously industrial, right? But any commercial situation where there's a lot of traffic in and out, I think that was something that was raised at one point, so I think that might be where he was headed with that. I don't know.
Well, April specifically, I'm sorry, April specifically mentioned apartments near the railroad yard because of the fumes there. But there's, there's quite a large residential development already there. It's already residential.
But was there some discussion about near, like a parking, like a Hannaford-sized parking lot with all the traffic that comes? I'm not saying this is something I, I don't think it's, I think there's enough housing around all of those parking lots already, but I feel like I remember hearing some discussion about that.
I wouldn't necessarily want to try to come up with all of the different things that would or wouldn't work. I think the planning board now and in the future is going to be able to make those determinations as they, as they come about. I, I wouldn't, so I believe where we're at right now is, is saying to change the language to say, to remove the except apartment buildings. I think that's how it's worded. But adding in something saying three units or more would need planning board approval. I will throw out, should we say unless it's a budding industrial or airport industrial?
Are we talking, I think, we're only talking about rezoning commercial, right?
Right. But if, if that commercial property abuts airport industrial or industrial, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
We already have housing that abuts it.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think everybody who's here probably, I think if April were here, she would request that, but she's not, so I don't know what to do in that situation. But for me, I don't, I think because there's already pre-existing. I don't know about around the airport, though, like, is there? Okay.
There is. And I'm, I'm 100% happy with where we're at right now.
All right, cool. Me too.
I'm a little confused, but...
I believe, if I can summarize, we're saying to change the language so that it would say apartments are allowed in commercial B, C, and D, but if there are three or more units, the planning board needs to provide approval.
Yeah, essentially, you're requesting that the council change the ordinance to clarify.
Correct.
The three or more units to also include these new zones. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is how it says it in the residential. Two-family dwellings and alternat, alteration of single-family dwellings to accommodate more than two families, provided parking, accessory dwelling units as defined, new multifamily, shoot, where did it just go? Hold on. Had it. There it is. Okay. New multifamily dwellings and conversions of existing buildings to multifamily dwellings as provided in subsection whatever, chapter 244 of subdivision of land and site plan review of the city code. Notwithstanding the above, the code enforcement officer may approve conversions to existing buildings to create as many as three units if those conversions do not constitute subdivisions. So that's what it says in the commercial, I mean, in the residential.
Oh, but, but it says that in the commercial A zone, which is what I thought you were reading, because it's the exact same language.
That's what it says in the low-density residential A district.
So if you see, if you go to the commercial A zone, it does say that that requires a planning board review for multifamily development. So if you go to the commercial B zone and you just try, all you have to do is strike out.
Yep.
And commercial B permitted uses, it says any use permitted in the commercial A district, which would be apartments, except apartments.
So you could just strike out.
So if you strike except apartments, that would mean that you could have one apartment, two apartments, three apartments would require, three or more would require planning board review.
Wow. So by, yeah, so by striking out or apartments we have, then we create. Somebody can use an adaptive reuse and add one or two apartments to their existing building, or if they build a new structure, they have to come into planning board approval, correct?
Unless it's a new, can you, can you have ADUs in commercial, you can't?
I think if it's a new structure that was only two units.
Only residential.
In residential zones where you have an existing single-family home.
Okay.
So what, if you had a vacant lot in a residential zone, if this is, this comes from the state law, we didn't make this up. You would have to build your single-family home and then add on a unit. Yeah, let's just, well, I will wordsmith this and send it to you if this is what you want to vote for. I'll just make sure that it, it references section 4.20, and that is the, I'm just having trouble finding it because I have a new copy of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to have Ann change that language to what we want. What was previously discussed.
Psychically, she's a vault.
Okay, so that definitely requires the, that language is there because it references section 4.20. But I want to make sure, you haven't voted yet.
No.
I want to make sure I know what you're voting on.
Yeah.
You've mentioned adaptive reuse, but it's not required that you can have apartments, if you make this change, you could have apartments in a brand-new building.
But if it were three or more?
Yes, then it would come to the planning board.
So if it were a new structure and only one or, well, I guess one wouldn't be an apartment, but two.
Yeah.
So, or a new structure that was mixed-use commercially and an apartment.
I guess I'm still struggling to see what it is that we're trying to accomplish. I, I don't feel, so the only thing that we're doing is making it so that people can put in one or two units in these areas?
Nope.
Is that what we're looking to accomplish here?
Nope, somebody, somebody could come and have a five unit, but anywhere in the city, they have to come and get approval, site plan review.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so...
Right, then it's just us.
Yeah.
And then not three city council meetings.
Other than like remodeling, remodeling and adding one apartment, right, Ann? It requires site plan review.
Okay.
Well, or like, for example, is, if there's a, like, there's a store and there's space above it, enough space above it for two apartments in a zone where that previously was not allowed, now people can put two apartments, or owners of buildings can put two apartments above a store in a pre-existing space, and it fits within the zoning ordinance now, and so that, they can go directly into building that instead of this regemoral.
Right. So I believe all we're doing is removing except apartments.
Exactly.
Okay.
We've been like going around with all Barry Bush about this for months.
Then, then that is the motion to remove except apartments from commercial B, C, and D, which will be exactly what we want.
Second on that.
I'm sorry, Cassie, you second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay.
Do you want to say anything else?
No, I can't prepare like to have like an actual, like, can't prepare.
I know.
You could make an honorary motion to adjourn.
I think though, Rhian, like if there are concerns at the council, like adaptive reuse-type use could be an alternative. Like you could bring that up as something that we mentioned, right?
Maybe. We'll see how it works.
If people get, get dicey about our changes here.
Just for anybody that's watching this, I want to make sure they understand that the planning board only recommends... the planning board only recommends to the council.
Right.
So this has to go to the council for two votes.
Okay, so, does anybody have any other, we, we also, by the way, recommended to the council, this was like a couple months ago, and they're still dealing with it, I think, to. Eliminate the parking, minimum parking requirement in down, just the downtown.
We're done with that?
Oh, you are? Okay.
We got done with that?
For a apartment.
Meeting before that? Yeah, we're, we're done with that.
Because technically the ordinance said for each apartment, you had to have one seat, one parking, off-street parking? No. But for commercial spaces like in the downtown, they could use existing parking as part of that, so we just made that inconformance housing and commercial the same.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was like our first round of trying to encourage more housing.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other housing additions that they feel they would like to add to the commercial zones? Or are we comfortable closing out this discussion?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion that we close the discussion of changes to the commercial zones.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, great, we can move on from that. So then, this is just a discussion item brought up today, so we won't vote on it, but Anne, do you kind of want to explain the, you lost me on the paper roads in the email, so maybe you should.
Oh. Actually, I need to do some more work.
Okay.
On, on revising the private road requirements.
Okay.
So the idea was to look for ways that we could increase housing in Waterville by revising the zoning. And so I suggested one possibility would be revising the residential B zone to require only 85 feet of road frontage instead of 100, because we have many, many lots in the city that don't have 100 feet of road frontage. They're already developed, but they don't have 100 feet because they were built before 1971. And the land area would, would then be 8,500 square feet for, for a lot, and it would be half of that per unit. So right now, you have to, in the residential B zone, you have to have 10,000 square feet per lot, but you can have two units, aside from ADUs, which is a total, totally different topic. But you, to have a two unit, you have to have 5,000 square feet of land per unit. So the proposal, I'm just throwing this out as an option, would be then you would have with the 8,500 square foot lot, you would only need 4,250 square feet per unit. And so that would mean you could have two more units per acre. If you were building multifamily, for example, two more units per acre.
Which would encourage like some infill on.
Hopefully.
Where we have existing.
Utilities, yeah.
All right, so that will be coming to a planning board meeting near you soon.
So what I'm proposing to do is ask the council to send, to refer that to the planning board for a public hearing, so there will be proper notice for it. You can't vote on it tonight because no one in the public knows anything about this.
And it hasn't been sent to us, so.
I would love an example at some point, just to see it and draw it, like, I mean, I'm a visual. I would just love to see.
Yeah, we have to like identify the different.
Yeah, okay.
Structures, yeah.
Or lots, possible lots, it's like, yeah.
Was, and I believe the housing committee disbanded, but did they do work to identify vacant lots?
Oh, I asked before.
Or just vacant buildings? Or empty lots versus vacant buildings? Did they identify empty lots in residential?
Well, I asked Paul Kastengway, he had software.
Yep.
I asked him to make a list of all the properties in the RB zone that were vacant and more than 15,000 square feet. So I have that list and I can provide it to you.
Okay.
But another way to do that is turn on, go into the city's GIS and turn on the aerial photos, so you can see, you can actually see the vacant lots.
Yeah.
But if I give you the list, which I will do, then you can go into the GIS and look up each one of those parcels.
Yep.
Vacant lots that are more than 15,000 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, I'm like, there are a lot of.
There was a reason, we were researching something at the time, and that's why I, I chose that.
Got it.
All right. I motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Great.